All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the select board meeting for today, Thursday, July 11th. It's an issue order. Right now, we have Denise, Kevin, we have Roger, myself, Alec could not make it tonight, so we have four of us here. And we'll start off as you vote.
Aye. Let's lead us to the flat of the United States of America and into the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, under appointments and resignations, retirements, first up, we have a joint meeting with the housing authority, Board of Commissioners to appoint Kathleen O'Brien. Do we have to, do you have to open your meeting again?
Yes, please.
So you can.
I'll sneak a little bit in here.
We have to open our meeting.
Pardon me? We have to open our meeting. So it's a call to order from the Norton House Authority. Joanne, please, yes, no?
Yes.
Here, Paul, yes, Ralph's here, and our candidate is here, Kathleen.
Here.
Thank you. We're all present.
Okay, excellent.
So take your leave. We're here tonight to fill the vacancy of Jim Dinsel, our dear friend who passed away after some real challenges with his health. And we miss him dearly. And we now have in her, in his replacement, another member who lives here in the community. Kathleen, would you like to join me at the, so they can see you and get an idea. If they have any questions, they can make them directly to you.
Absolutely.
Would you just identify yourself for the board?
My name is Kathleen O'Brien. I live in Elm Building 107 in Woodland Meadows. I was a good friend to Jim. He was a good friend with my father for years at the senior center. So I'm happy to step in for him.
And we're happy to have her volunteer.
Excellent. So if there are any questions, move on.
I'd just like to briefly endorse Kathleen's nomination for this. She is a, many of the, having served on the board and not being a resident here, Jim was always very useful, giving us some information of things we should be aware of and input. And now we have another member of the community who is, she tells me she's been tutored by Jim in those years.
Well, that is true. And, but I have a history of 25 years being certified hospice and palliative care nurse.
Right.
Working in home care. I operated on the Ethics Committee. I was a preceptor for both home care and hospice nurses come into home care, which is not an easy profession, but one that I loved. And if I could still be doing it, I would be.
So I look at this as an appointment for us to be a better board, more efficient board, by having a member of the community who lives here.
Fantastic.
Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to, Kathleen, thank you for the services you've provided to the community up until this point, and thank you for volunteering your time and looking to get this appointment.
Absolutely.
I would make a motion that we appoint Kathleen O'Brien to the Norton Housing Authority.
A second.
Okay. Motion of the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations. Oh, yeah, another vote, I guess.
I'll close my end of the meeting. Meeting adjourned. But, ah, where did you go?
We, well, we didn't, we have to vote.
We have to vote on it. I thought I could sneak out. All in favor of the selectmen and our approval of Kathleen? Say aye.
Aye.
Voice vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. And you can't vote for yourself, so.
I'm just going to say me too.
Now you can close your, yes, thank you very much, gentlemen, for seeing us, ladies, for seeing us first, it's appreciated.
Thank you.
You all, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the appointed select board member as a liaison for the Elm Street Sewer Project.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Snyder.
I'd be happy to be the select board representative to the Elm Street Sewer Project.
I don't, Roger, I want to, too, so you guys can.
Oh, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to step back in. Kevin, if you're willing to take on that responsibility, I'd be happy to let you have it.
That's a, that's a thankless one.
There was something in your tone, Roger.
No, it's, honestly, I think that's going to be a very important position that one of us has to be in over the next, who knows how long, but it's, it's an important project that's got to be going on over there.
No, I know.
Thank you for taking that.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. All right, so we, we need a motion for that.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that Kevin Snyder be appointed as the select board liaison for the Elm Street Sewer Project.
A second.
Okay, motion of the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, well, thank you, Kevin, appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, and we have a couple resignations. Christine DeBeau is resigning from the Recreation Commission. Okay, we need to vote into it right. And Floyd Thompson was asked to resign from the Finance Committee, so he's resigning from the Finance Committee effective yesterday, or today. I know later on, we have an announcement about the vacancies, so we can do that at that point. Next up, we have approval of minutes. What do we have, just the June 20th, regular and executive session?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Morrison.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the select board on June 20th.
Regular and executive?
We can do one at a time, or hold it to the last, whatever.
No, we do them separate. So, yeah, the regular minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion of the second to approve the regular minutes from June 20th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Now we need one for the.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we accept the minutes for the executive session of June 20th.
Okay.
A second.
Do you need to?
No, I got it. Thank you.
Okay, so we're worried. Do we have a motion of the second?
Yes.
Okay, that was a little strange. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Submissions?
Another day, back.
Oh, that's right, that's right. These were earlier than that.
That day was done after the news.
You're absolutely right. Okay, so let's try this again. So let's say that Roger's executive session motion was for the early executive session. Correct. So now we need one for the late executive session.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Morrison.
I'd like to make a motion for the late executive session on June 20th.
To approve?
To approve, please.
Second.
All right, motion of the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chair, I was kind of stinkin' over the back.
Oh, uh, any exceptions?
Yes.
Okay, so three, three in the exception. Okay, now we need one for the.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we accept the minutes for the executive session of June 20th.
Okay.
A second.
Do you need the?
No, I got it. Thank you.
Okay, so we're worried. Do we have a motion of the second?
Yes.
Okay, that was a little strange. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Submissions?
Another day, back.
Oh, that's right, that's right. These were earlier than that.
That day was done after the news.
You're absolutely right. Okay, so let's try this again. So let's say that Roger's executive session motion was for the early executive session. Correct. So now we need one for the late executive session.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Morrison.
I'd like to make a motion for the late executive session on June 20th.
To approve?
To approve, please.
Second.
All right, motion of the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Submissions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
That's all I need. So now we're on the license of the department. So it's, what do we have? The view of discussion vote to approve the application for, I'm going to pronounce this hardly, I apologize, Sherone Mankang.
Mankang.
Mankang, okay. Due business says time for tie for the transfer of the common vicula license at 63 East Main Street, Unit 5 and 1. Would you like to, just let's know who you are.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Chancina, and I would like to transfer the license to Jolanda Mankang and open up a Thai restaurant, which is right across the town hall. And we have a couple of the restaurant already. I got one in Middleboro and one in Liston, and hopefully to open up another one over here, just to expand the business.
That's in the same spot as the other.
Yeah, it used to be a Thai restaurant before, and we've taken that over the next two.
We're excited. I thought it was successful, but no more Thai.
I was very upset with that. Does anyone have any questions?
How did you find us in Norton and want to be here?
I know the previous owner, and she's, she wanted to move closer to her, her house, so I offer her, I want to take over her business. This is how this started.
Anybody else with questions?
I have any questions.
We all just wanted to open, is that what you're saying? Just put it.
Did you bring any samples, did you?
Not yet.
It's time.
Hopefully to open the knockers coming along.
All right, so.
Having a lot.
Did you, did you run any renovations inside?
Yes, a little bit.
All right, excellent. So. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the application of Sherone Mankang LLC, DBA time for tie for the transfer of a common vicula license at 63 East Main Street, Unit 5 and 1.
A second.
Okay, motion of the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, excellent, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up, we have some announcements. Well, there's vacancies on the Finance Committee with Jack, kind of, men or?
Is there coffee going?
Tea, it sounds like a tea cup.
So there's, what does the town hall going to be?
Yeah.
So there's, there's currently two vacancies on the Finance Committee. I don't have it in front of me, his email to send him information.
I have it, uh, doesn't say. It just says, do you want me to read it?
Oh, I have, I have his email.
You got it.
Okay, so anybody interested, I'm sure there's another way, but I know his email for the town is jconnway@nortonmaus.com. So anybody interested, I know he's already had a couple of people interested, but it's, it's, it's a tough committee, but it's, it's very, very important to them.
Very important.
Extremely important.
And Mr. Chair, just, he mentions he's accepting interest, expressions of interest through Friday, July 26th. So if you want to be on it, get your request in before that.
Okay, so you have until the 26th. Do we have any other announcements? Okay, I guess we can move on to new business. We'll get 6:15, yeah. Okay, so now we're going to open up the public hearing on the application of PH Norton Incorporated, doing business as Downtown Public House, manager Glenn J. Stowers, for a transfer of Section 12 on premises, common vicu, all alcohol beverage license at 292 West Main Street, Norton, from 292 LME Incorporated, doing business as a downtown. Okay, and who do we have speaking today?
Good evening, my name's Christopher Timpson. I'm an attorney, generally out in Goldwood, but now I'm kind of out of the gate, so, you know, I am happy to present this to you. So you should have the full package and all the notices that they've given. I have with me tonight Glenn Stowers and John Cox. They are the principals of PH Norton. They're taking, they're, they're going to be taking over this downtown location. They're involved in other successful restaurants, one in Rentham and one in Franklin. They basically have a casual dining, fun, kind of family atmosphere to their restaurants. It seems to have gone very well in these other locations. In fact, I can honestly say, having represented them in front of the boards in the other locations, the other towns are very happy to have them in town. They get involved in the community. They tend to be involved in charitable events and giving, and, you know, they're, I personally know them for a long time. They're usually good people, and they have quality food and a quality establishment. They're planning to do a refresh on the restaurant itself. They have a patio that's part of this restaurant with live music. They're also going to have a game area that's kind of a, I don't know if you have a chance to look at the schematic, but the game area is going to be adjacent to the parking lot. They plan to have that enclosed. They plan to have portable type of alcohol service there with a member of the staff, whenever there's going to be, whenever it's going to be open. They make sure that all their staff is tip certified, and they have someone on staff who has the, that chump gaming certification in case they encounter something like that. One other thing they wanted me to note was that the clerk, Jennifer Reed, was extremely helpful and extremely knowledgeable, and she's a gem that they were very happy to work with, so we guys have, a good person, and they feel comfortable. I don't know if there's anything else that you want to hear about this particular, I am happy to answer any questions, but that's basically what they're going to be doing and they're looking to be able to look upon this day and for.
Okay, so I've noticed that you built a mark over there already. When, when is the estimated opening date?
Glenn would have.
I won't hold you to it, I'm just, just late August, late August. That's what we're targeting. All right, any questions, folks?
Go ahead. No, you go. You mentioned you had some other facilities. Where are they located? Have you had any issues with those facilities?
The one's in Rentham, one's in Franklin. They've had no issues with those other facilities. They want a clean operation. And I should mention that Glenn is going to be the manager of this license. He's currently the manager on one of the other establishment licenses. His plan is that once, assuming this lic, the license is transferred and is approved, he's going to come off that of the license as manager and focus on this license while it's, you know, you know, coming online, so to speak, to make sure that he's focused on this license. It may, you know, when things get going and, and assuming everything goes smoothly, he may step back from that, but he's a hands-on guy, and he wants to be in charge and in control there.
You stole my question. Sorry. So I'll come up with another question. The establishments in Rentham and Franklin, what are they called?
One of them is the gavel. And the one in Franklin is called the railery.
Okay. All right.
I noticed on the application that you're going to be open seven days a week, you're not closed any days?
They, so their model is to try to make sure they take advantage of whatever business opportunity they can in terms of being open. Certainly, if, if they're allowed to be open, they're going to try to be so that they can make their business model work.
How was, how's it going finding staff?
That, I will have to defer.
I can see personally from my business, it's horrible finding staff.
It's very difficult, but they're there. We cultivate a lot, and we, and we very seldom move people from place to place, but we set things up so that we have to in order to make things that we can. But you can find them, you have, you have to manage them differently today than you did years ago.
Absolutely true. Anything else? Yes? All right, so nothing else from the board? Is there anybody in the audience that has any, any questions?
Yes, I can't wait to try out the new restaurant.
All right, thank you, Peter.
I did have one more question, sorry. What kind of food do you envision that would be served there?
Comfort food oriented, you know, family style, pizza's coming.
Yeah.
Pizza's coming. I hired all the people that have all the pizzas.
You know that, obviously, you're, you're aware of what the location has been over the years.
I've heard a great many things. I'd love to hear what you.
I've heard nothing but great things about the downtown in that area. I just know that, I didn't know if you were going to be doing something totally different than what was there previously, or just going to try to continue.
No, our attitude is to take what really worked, and what, obviously, everybody's interested in, and then accentuate it and add some, a couple of things to it, to maybe round it out, so that it appeals to even more people.
Excellent.
Great.
Okay, so if there's no other questions from the audience, I guess we can close the public hearing.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing on the.
Application of PH Norton Incorporated, doing businesses Downtown Public House.
A second. Motion of the second. We can voice vote this one, but then it has to be an individual for the license, right? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so if, for the vote for the, for the actual license, we have to do a.
For the lic license?
For the lic license.
Okay.
Okay, so you want to make a motion? Oh, whatever, yeah, you are welcome to do it.
Okay, that we, transfer of license to on premises common vicula for all alcohol beverages at 292 West Main Street, Norton, from LME Incorporated, doing businesses downtown, to Downtown Public House.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, now let's go down the road. Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I, yes. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm with my husband, Mary, actually.
So in our, in our packets, number two was cut off, but if you printed it, it should be on there. Discussion and revote is at the Fall Annual Town Meeting. There was a paper kicking around that had the wording that we need. You have it?
So what we're requesting is that you vote tonight to open a separate date for the October Town Meeting, which would be Monday, October 21st. And once you open the Town Meeting, set the date that the, will accept articles up till 3:30 PM on August 27th.
Good question. Mike, did you check the school first to make sure that no event's happening at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
And if we had to change it, I mean, it's, Town Hall's open, you have it there, we can change that up until, up until, what is it, 30, that date before, or?
I would think you could do it, or up to 14 days, but I checked.
Okay.
Worth asking now, if we're anticipating any high attendance matters coming up, should we be thinking about?
If you, if you ask that question on Sunday, we probably have a final answer ready, but I don't think we have that answer yet.
Okay.
So I think, I think Jack did a great job, again, calling out Jack, doing a good job coordinating everything after that.
Yeah, we have Bama team now.
Initial.
Yeah, we have a team now, October.
Yeah, I think, I think it's on everybody's radar to make sure that we're going to be well prepared, so.
Okay.
Okay, so there is some wording and a motion. You have, you want to just read this, or?
Mr. Chair. I know that we vote to schedule the Fall Annual Town Meeting for Monday, October 21st, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the Norton High School, and to accept warrant articles until 3:30 PM on August 27th, 2024, at the Select Board's office, Norton Municipal Center, 70 East Main Street, Norton.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Next up, we have the discussion on the future use of the former senior center.
So over a year ago, the American Legion had expressed interest in using the old senior center, and they wanted to see what the board thought. If they were in there, it would be on a basis where they're responsible for everything, utilities, maintenance, we're not going to spend a dime on the building, so they'd be responsible for everything, and it would be more or less an at-will lease, so if we decided at some point to do something else with the building, that we could.
Has there been any, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Has there been any other interest in the building from any other parties?
There are, I, I, who was, there was someone the other day, I don't know.
Who's the nonprofit?
Yeah, another, another nonprofit, just looking to use it.
And another question would be, when do they expect to it to be available to be used?
That's a great question. Yeah, I would say in September.
So.
I would say that this, it's not really necessary for us to take action today, but just to have some discussion about it. I'd like to see if there are any other groups that are looking to use it, that maybe we could, even in a joint community thing, use it, as several groups use the building at different days or something, if they could work something out like that, as opposed to just saying, we're just going to let the one group use it, if we're just going to be using it for nonprofits, if maybe more than one nonprofit is looking for a home.
Yeah, kind of, to be, Chair, kind of suggest something similar. Roger, I would take multiple groups, if we can somehow evaluate all of them and decide, A, we can limit it together, but if not, we can do assign to one, some, some way of kind of voting for one, or ranking them, or something like that, so it's a fair look at them, right?
Yeah, my concern, too, would be, you know, taking over the utilities and everything, and all the costs.
And how you work that out.
And that would be, that would be something to work out, yeah.
Yeah.
But I would, I just, I, I, I wouldn't want to just say yes to one group without knowing if there's, you know, there's other groups that might.
Do that have a fair chance, I don't know.
Right, yep.
Okay, great. So next up is, I, I wanted to bring on a discussion on creating a committee for budget oversight, financial planning. That, that name, that title is not set in stone, I think, I wanted to bring it up to the board here, just for your thoughts and feedback, and then I wanted to take it to Town Council and see what we can do legally about setting this up, and if we need to have more members. My initial thoughts, and we, I think we talked about this at the town meeting, and I've spoken about it a few other times, you know, a couple of members in the Select Board, Finance Committee, School Committee overseeing throughout the year, the budget, and mainly said, in my mind, I see it as strategic planning for the future, so we don't run into any issues that we have run into this year with finances, or we avoid them if possible. So that's my thoughts today. I mean, I'm open for, for any other thoughts, or we can.
So my, my initial thought was, would be that if we're going to do something like that, I think it's, we should make it a smaller committee that do like we did in the Yale School or things like that. You don't want, I don't think we need to have that sort of a thing. I think it should be something more in line as an advisory board to give, give information back, as opposed to trying to be, have everybody.
Oh, yeah, no, I think, I think a couple of members, two members on the Select Board, two members of Finance, two members of School Committee, so, so nobody has to worry about the meeting law with their own boards, and they can have their committee, and then a report back to each. So a lot of it, too, for me, is communication. I'm going to, I know we're all trying to communicate more as boards together. I think that's going to be a huge help, having members of usually those three boards together, meeting, you know, monthly, or, I don't know, whatever they want to do it. But this is, in the initial planning series, I wanted to bring it to your attention before I even did anything, you know, like talk to the town attorney or anything like that. I'd rather get all of your input.
I think it would be great, here, any, any, any way that we could have more communication between, especially those three boards that you mentioned, would be great, and may even want to expand that into some other boards as well, and if something that's happening is applying to them as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think it's a, I think it's a better, and I think it's something that people want, because I know people have tried to approach me. And.
You know that, obviously, you're aware of what the location has been over the years.
I've heard a great many things. I'd love to hear what you.
I've heard nothing but great things about the downtown in that area. I just know that, I didn't know if you were going to be doing something totally different than what was there previously, or just going to try to continue.
No, our attitude is to take what really worked and what obviously everybody's interested in, and then accentuate it and add some, a couple of things to it, to maybe round it out. So it appeals to even more people.
Okay, so if there's no other questions from the audience, I guess we can close the public hearing. Make a motion to close the public hearing on the
application of PH Norton Incorporated Doing Businesses Downtown Public House.
Second? Motion, second. We can voice vote this one, but it has to be an individual for the license, right? So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So if, for the vote for the, for the actual license, we have to do a
For like a license?
For like a license.
Okay.
Okay, so, you want to make a motion?
Make a motion?
Yeah, you are welcome to do it.
Okay. That we transfer license to on-premises comicula for all alcohol beverages at 292 West Main Street Norton from LME Incorporated Doing Businesses Downtown to Downtown Public House.
Okay. Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, now let's go down the road. Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I, yes. Excellent.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm with my husband, Mary.
So in our, in our packets, number two was cut off, but if you printed it, it should be on there. It's a discussion and a vote to set the fall annual town meeting. There was a paper kicking around and had the wording that we need. You have it?
So what we're requesting is that you vote tonight to open a separate date for the October town meeting, which would be Monday, October 21st. And once you open the town meeting, set the date that the, will accept articles up till 3:30 PM on August 27th.
Great question. Mike, did you check the school first to make sure that no event's happening at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
And if we had to change it, I mean, it's, the town hall is open. If you have it there, we can change that. Up until, up until, on what is it? 30 days before or?
I would think you could do it, or to 14 days, but I checked.
Okay.
Worth asking now, considering any high tendence matters coming up, should we be thinking about?
If you, if you ask that question on Sunday, we probably have a final answer, right? I don't think we have that answer yet.
Okay.
So I think, I think Jack did a great job, again, calling out Jack to do a good job coordinating everything after that.
Yeah, we have BAM with G now.
Initial panel.
Yeah, we have G now, October.
Yeah, I think, I think it's on everybody's radar to make sure that we're getting well prepared.
Okay.
Okay, so there is some wording and a motion. You have it?
You want to just read this or? Mr. Chair. I know that we vote to schedule the fall annual town meeting for Monday, October 21st, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the Norton High School, and to accept warrant articles until 3:30 PM on August 27th, 2024, at the select board's office, Norton Municipal Center, 70 East Main Street, Norton.
Okay, is there a second?
A second?
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Next up, we have the discussion on the future use of the former senior center.
So over a year ago, the American Legion had expressed interest in using the old senior center. And they wanted to see what the board thought. If they were in there, it would be on a basis where they're responsible for everything, utilities, maintenance. We're not going to spend a dime on the building, so they'd be responsible for everything. And it would be more or less an ad will at least, so if we decided at some point to do something else with the building,
Okay.
Has there been any, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Has there been any other interest in the building from any other parties?
There are. I, I, who was, there was someone the other day, I don't remember.
It was the nonprofit.
Yeah, another, another nonprofit, just looking to use it.
And another question would be, when do they expect to it to be available to be used?
Um, that's a great question. Yeah. I would say in September.
So I would say that this, it's not really necessary for us to take action out today, but just to have some discussion about it. I'd like to see if there are any other groups that are looking to use it, that maybe we could, even in a joint community thing, use it, as several groups use the building on different days or something, if they could work something out like that, as opposed to just saying, we're just going to let the one group use it. If we're just going to be using it for nonprofits, if maybe more than one nonprofit is looking for a home.
Yeah, kind of, the chair is going to suggest something similar. Roger, I would think multiple groups, if we can somehow evaluate all of them and decide, A, we can limit it together, but if not, we can do assign to one, some, some way of kind of voting for one, or ranking them, or something like that, so it's a fair look at them, right?
Yeah, my concern too would be, you know, taking over the utilities and everything, and all the costs.
And how you work that out.
And that would be, that would be something to work out, yeah.
Yeah.
But I would, I just, I, I, I wouldn't want to just say yes to one group without knowing if there's, you know, there's other groups that might.
Do you have any fair chance?
Right, yep.
Okay, great. So next up is, I, I wanted to bring on a discussion on creating a committee for budget oversight, financial planning. That, that name, that title is not set in stone, I think. I wanted to bring it up to the board here just for your thoughts and feedback, and then I wanted to take it to town council and see what we can do legally about setting this up, and if we need to have more members. My initial thoughts. And we, I, I think we talked about this at the town meeting, and I've spoken about it a few other times. You know, a couple of members of the select board, finance committee, the school committee, overseeing throughout the year, the budget, and mainly, in my mind, I see it as strategic planning for the future, so we don't run into any issues that we have run into this year with finances, or we avoid them if possible. So that's my thoughts. I mean, I'm open for, for any other thoughts, or we can.
So my, my initial thought was, would be that if we're going to do something like that, I think it's, we should make it a smaller committee that do like we did in the Yale School or things like that. You don't want, I, I don't think we need to have that sort of a thing. I think it should be something more in line as an advisory board to give, give information back, as opposed to trying to be, have everybody.
Oh, yeah, no, I think, I think a couple of members, two members of the select board, two members of finance, two members of school committee, so so nobody has to worry about the meeting law with their own boards, and they can have their committee, and then report back to each. So a lot of it too, for me, is communication. I'm going to, I know we're all trying to communicate more as boards together. I think that's going to be a huge help, having members of usually those three boards together, meeting, you know, monthly, or whatever they want to do it. But this is, in the initial planning series, I want to bring it to your attention before I even did anything, you know, like talk to the town attorney or anything like that. I'd rather get all of your input.
I think it would be a great idea, any, any, any way that we could have more communication between, especially those three boards that you mentioned, would be great, and may even want to expand that into some other boards as well, and if something that's happening is applying to them as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. And I think it's something that people want, because I know people have tried to approach me about it, and I know they've approached you about it.
I think we've all been approached.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I think it's something that, you know, we can be responsive to what the, what the town has asked us to do. So I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a great idea, and I like the idea too of keeping it small. You know, any type of, I mean, in my opinion is, once you get, you know, more than six, seven people, it starts to get really hard to manage all that, so I think keeping it small is a good idea. But like you said, like if you, Roger, like you said, if you want to bring in somebody from another department or whatever, certainly, yeah. So, yeah, I think at this point, it makes sense to just sort of wait for what town councils recommends as far as setting it up, and I'm assuming that's what we're waiting for town council to kind of advise us on what to do, or, yeah.
Exactly, and that's why I want to make sure we set it up properly, and we have, you know, the, the rules written out clearly as to what this, this board is going to be responsible for, before we even put it in motion. I don't want to, I don't want to come back in six months and say, oh, well, we never told them that they were allowed to do this, or this, or that. So I want to make sure it's all written down clearly from the attorney.
Yeah, it might be, maybe, sorry, Steve, Mr. Chair. Maybe a good idea for us to get together, also, and talk about, you know, goals, you know, expectations, all of that as well. You know, be very clear right from the outset of how we expect from this, this sub.
Just kind of send them out in the wind, saying, figure it out.
Right, yeah, so my thought process is, was to bring it to this board first, you know, make sure, and I, and I did say it publicly, and I did say it was a great idea publicly, and I wasn't lying. I 100% am for it. So I want to bring it to you first, next step is, is go through the attorney, kind of flesh it out a little bit more, and then have the attorney come and talk to all of us, and go over it. That's, that's for me, yeah.
Sounds good.
Ideally, sooner or later, I don't want to drag it out, but I'd like to do it, get it moving, so.
Yep.
All right, I, I thought I saw Sandy in there. I know she's, I think, out because of this. If you want to come say something, you can.
I know Diana's also been out, yes.
Oh, I didn't see her there, I'm sorry, Diana.
That's all right. It gets shorter every day.
I wasn't, I wasn't wearing glasses. I don't, I can't see. That's my face.
No, I really appreciate you all talking about this, just from my experience in having lived through something as slight as the public library planning process, which libraries are required by statute to have a five-year plan before they even put a numeral to a budget, so that we have to know where we're going. And I think from my experience being on the leadership committee for the town of Plumb, it's some planning, your long-range planning will determine your budget. Your oversight, you guys do it on a regular basis. You see the warrants, you approve them, you ask questions. You have a finance committee that does that same thing. But the town of Norton needs to know where we're going to be in five years, in 10 years, in 15 years, in order to adequately plan, and I'm speaking, I don't, I don't care what happens on Saturday. You know, either way, we need to know where we're going to responsibly manage our funding. So I definitely encourage you to look at the long-range planning aspect first. Rely on the professionals you have, and your, your own oversight that you do, and approving the warrants. And I do assume you look at them and ask questions, and make sure that everything is fit. It could really benefit our town and help us in the long run, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good.
I, I think we had a good conversation last night, the finance committee, when we're doing the budget coming up. Rather than spending a lot of time reviewing budgets that there's no way we can fund it, say, here is the money, this is the revenue, this is what we have. Schools get this, town gets this, do your budgets. Don't come in with a 12% increase in your budget if we only can increase it 3%. This is all the money we have for town services. Build your budgets on that. And so we, we said last night, we'll do, we'll do that early on in the budget process, so everybody knows, and go from there.
Yeah, and I also think, you know, this group will help guide us in directing you as far as, you know, what our priorities are going to be. And the same thing with the school committee directs, directs the superintendent on what their priorities are going to be. I mean, to your credit and to the superintendent's credit, I feel it's been, okay, just do it, get it done within the limits, and it's with no real direction, I don't think, in the past several years. And that's on us, as a group, but I, I want that to change in the next several years. You're getting the direction you need, so you can say, no, this is what, this is, this is what was asked of us to get done.
Yeah, there's nothing to say you can't say, all right, this is, this is what we have for revenues, so this is our, our budget. This is what a level of servicing budget would have been if we had the money to fund it, but we know this is it.
But spending hours on, and hours on something that, and, and God bless all those people on the finance committee. I don't know if I could have done that myself, and I, and I've been in numbers my entire career, so I just, I'm thankful for every single one of them.
And I think early on, like the finance committee said, that the select board should give an opinion on what your priorities are in the budget, and go from there.
Yeah, and that's what I was getting at too, they can help, that, that committee can help guide us as far as, you know, what we can do. I mean, Kevin and I have been on the longest hearing, I don't think we've given direction yet on.
It's more a reactive process than a proactive process.
Exactly, and we got to flip that to make it more proactive.
Absolutely. If there's any way we can get in front of the ball instead of chasing the ball.
Yeah, that's going to help everybody, I mean, I think it's a win-win doing this, so.
Mr. Chair, I could ask, Mike, a quick question. I think another part of this is going to be not just looking at, thinking about numbers going forward, but about policy, and about financial policy. We have a financial policy in place, is that correct? Okay, so.
So when you form the committee, actually, could be something the committee could do is review the, because it's been three years. It's been three years, so review the policy and see what tweaks.
Yeah, because it's really hard to look forward, I think we've all found that during this, the most recent process. It's really hard to look forward one year, let alone five years, and figure out what state aid is going to be, and, you know. So, so the idea of having the, again, I like that word, expectations, to have the expectations through the policy of what the town wants to do, whether it's policy on stable, use a stable vision, or use a free catch, or whatever it is, and then use that to hold foot people with talent for it, so, or to the policy, so.
And I'm personally, I'm all about streaming as much as we can, and having, having our joint meetings was great, having everybody there, and everybody's opinions going. But that can take so much time, and, and we have this, this committee that has members of the boards to report back to each board, and then when we meet together, it's not going to be a seven-hour meeting. So we'll, we'll hopefully be on the same page at that point, so.
We've been talking about state aid, look, it's July 11th, still don't know.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd love to include your policy to, like, outline some guardrails for contract negotiations, what expectations are, when you're showing these contracts, all of it, right? Should I be saying?
Yeah. All right, maybe one of the first, excuse me, one of the first things that, that groups should do is set up their guardrails and set up the, all right, this is where we're heading with this committee, we're not, so that we're not just wandering down, and if we get pulled in this direction, pull them down.
I want to make sure they have a clear mandate.
Right.
As far as, they need to have a clear mandate, so they're not going in there just pulling things and trying to figure it out all the go. I want it to be clear, what will be in charge, so.
Yep.
You know I'm going to stop. You know, you do, you do have financial policies in place that you, that you do follow. If I could just make two large suggestions. The municipal side needs to begin their budget season much earlier than they do. To begin a budget season in January, February, for a town meeting that is in April or May, is no time. Your budget season, from experience, should begin in late September, early October, because your department heads are already thinking about next year, and they will need a directive from the board for what their budget development should be. You know, either we're doing a 1% budget or a 400% budget. They need that directive, which you all set, early enough to start putting together their reasonable numbers and their expectations for the following year. That will give, if you back it up to the fall, it usually, it's the department head's budget, and then it becomes the town manager's budget. The town manager's budget becomes the board of selectments, or the select board's budget. You should have your budget in place before Christmas, which then gives the finance committee January, February, to figure out what they're, you know, what they're going to recommend. Everybody comes back together, and then you go to town meeting as, as a coalesced group, not as, you know, I think this, I think that. But it, it provides for cohesion, and it gives a sense of stability to the community, which I think is what Norton desperately needs at this moment, is a sense of stability, and it's, that's, that's on you all. You can plan five years out. My classic example of a, a goal. My goal is to make it through the day. My activities are what I'm going to do through that day. But on top of all of that is a vision, that I'm going to have a good life. So it's the vision that the select board sets, and you can set a vision for five years. Within five years, we will have increased economic development by 2.3%. We would have repaved, you know, 33% of the road, you know, whatever your vision of a long-range success for our community is. And then your department heads and your town manager take those and build on the budget. So I encourage you to start the planning process first, but also to start your budget season earlier, so that people have time, and there's not the panic that we're so used to in spring. And that would be helpful, but got faith in you all, and you're elected here to do it. It's your fault you volunteered. So, that's it?
Thank you, guys. All right, so let's move on to the, if there's anything else, guys? Go. All right, we will be discussing this quite a bit more in the future, so don't, don't let it leave your, your mind. Next up, we have a discussion and our vote to take action on traffic safety committee recommendation of truck traffic on Woodard Street. We have Mr. Kimble here.
Evening. Rob Kimble, 51 Pine Street. I also chair the Safety Committee. So back in June of '23, we signed a request to the South Penn Regional Planning Department to, to assist us in coming up with some solutions in the area, the area of Southwest Street from Home Foods in Woodard Street, truck traffic, all the other various issues we've had in that area. So it was two-part. The prime head tonight talked about it, Woodard Street. And Woodard Street has been posted, there's no truck, truck traffic for the past 30 odd years, before my time, it was posted. It's not illegal, and I'm being forced, and when you see the sign anywhere in Norton, holding my street, Pine Street, those signs are totally illegal, and the police are not able to enforce it.
They're not enforcing.
Lewis ran in front of a house.
I know, it's a problem.
You'll have to get over that. Anyway, the police cannot enforce it, so, you know, they pretty much put their blind eye to it. So, again, it was a two-part program, so Louis Olivera was the person who, who helped us with this, and he sent on a memorandum, memorandum once, on February 5th of 2024. And what they did is they put down some strips, and they did some research to find out exactly what kind of traffic was being used on these streets, Southwest and Woodard Street, and, you know, it went down to the point of being, how many bicycles went down the street? So they knew exactly what was happening. Traffic along Woodard Street, what they go by is a range of 5% to 8%. So when you hear people say to you, you know, we can't have truck, truck traffic on Pine Street, as an example. There are many different factors that come into play, but most importantly, truck traffic under Massachusetts, combined with transportation DOT, if we don't exceed 5% to 8%, if the traffic is less than that, we have no right to restrict the traffic, and DOT will not approve it. So in the case of Woodard Street, they, they did the range, and, and took a look at it, and found out that the 5% to 8% actually exceed quite a bit, which surprised some of us, we didn't expect it to be as much. Just looking at the existing conditions, the street is about 30, 20, 22 feet wide, has 30 mile per hour speed on it. Has had an exclusion on, on trucks for the past three decades, even though it doesn't, on the mass law, it prohibits municipalities from declaring any rules that exclude heavy commercial vehicles. But anyway, because we received Chapter 90, one mistake. So Chapter 90 pretty much allows them to rule the rules, you know, I mean, they tell you what we can kind of do by doing so. So anyway, it ended up being a number of pieces of criteria on how to do it. And the board went through a lot of, a lot of that information ourselves, but automatic traffic recorded was installed in October of 2023, and the information was, was gathered from that. There's a different number of warrants that have to be addressed before it's approved by Massachusetts. And warrant number one would be to justify a heavy vehicle exclusion, the volume of heavy commercial vehicles. Heavy commercial vehicles will not exceed 5% to 8%. In accordance with the classification, two acts of six tires are considered a heavy commercial vehicle when a carrying capacity over two and a half tons, and these are delivery trucks such as UPS, FedEx, et cetera. Although included in the ATR percentage totals, if exclusion is in place and enforced, these vehicles are exempt from any exclusion in general purpose of making deliveries or anything like that. I know recently we've taken a lot of heat for the trucks using, no one's, as an example. They're going to a destination, they're going to a, a business, and even if we had a truck exclusion on that, on that street, all of that property has the right for that truck to continue to use that road for that purpose, so they would not be excluded, as an example. So the results when the ATR showed that, on average, let's see, the percentage of walking Woodard Street was recorded at 32.1%. I don't know where that came from, but that's what, that's what the counts were.
That's incredible.
They can count, they can count the delivery trucks in that percentage, but they're not counted, they're not necessarily banned from.
Yeah, I was saying, just Amazon alone.
I mean, that could be all Amazon, but because it is.
Running back and forth.
I didn't mean truck, I missed Kimble.
The second warrant is to justify heavy vehicle exclusion to be conditioned to pavement, and they found that the, the air road has severe roadway deterioration, especially from Woodard Street back to 140 Ton Avenue. The other way doesn't seem to be so bad, but that side is pretty bad. The third justification is land use. Woodard Street is serious primarily as a residential properties, and the town could consider a night exclusion if possible, but again, it's a residential area, and that's why I think the regional members of the board of selectmen put a restriction on it 30-plus years ago, to try to reduce the amount of traffic. Also, keep in mind, there's a rail track, there's a rail track that goes through there, which has no crossings, or no arms, or nothing to stop it down. So all the information was included in the checklist, and what they're asking us to do is to take a look at the information that was given to us, and request a a request permission from Department of Transportation, and to admission from Department of Transportation and to recommend that the volume exceeds five point eight percent and poor pavement, the heavy exclusion in a residential area. And it's recommended that the town of Norton, Norton submit a technical memorandum in coordinate with MassDOT District Five to work out restricting the property on that, on that, on the traffic on that road. This traffic study, by the way, was normally costing the county the ten thousand dollars. We worked it out through Serpide, but it didn't cost us anything. So this was done for free. We're allowed on the Serpide regulations to get a number of things done every year. That's part of the agreement. We pay Serpide, we pay interest, so we can, we can take advantage of that. Another example is we recently asked Serpide in October this year, I think it's a different year, we might be able to squeeze some more out of them, you know, look at West Main Street from the Town Common to Route four ninety-five and look at that entire corridor to determine speeds, you know, correct speed limits versus all over the place. It's forty miles per hour, it's thirty miles per hour, it's thirty-five, it's everywhere. And with the new bike pass coming on the line and everything that's going on in that corridor, we want to make sure that that is looked at. We can call, we recently expressed a lot of concerns about traffic, speed of traffic in front of airports. And we're taking all that into advisement and continue to look at different ways to come up with a solution to it. But again, if Serpide does it, save the town another ten thousand dollars, we don't have to go and pay somebody to do it.
So for the Woodwood Street, what do you need from us? Do you need us to approve?
Send a letter? What do we need?
Yeah. Because I know I had to send a letter for, for the study, for them to pick up the study.
Well, now the study's been done.
Yeah.
So what we have to do is give them the, how many pages was it? I think the total pages is a lot.
There's a bunch.
Seventy pages or whatever it is. Put that into a packet, send a couple of it to MassDOT Division Five and ask for a restriction on truck traffic on, on Woodwood Street. In addition to that, you may want to ask if there's any money that's available for an LED lighting system where a truck is, can be aware that that street is not available for the truck traffic in advance and then turn and wait on to Woodwood Street and say, whoops, there it is, how do I back out? They can't back out, there's no possible way. If we have signage and perhaps LED lighting up in that area in the cases.
On one forty, yes.
On one forty, there's no truck traffic on, on Woodwood Street.
Until they go up and down, go up.
Yeah.
Down Eddie Street.
And submitting this letter and getting it approved would mean that there's no truck traffic signs that actually can be enforced by them.
That's correct.
It would be legal.
So question, a three hundred percent traffic, traffic, do we show how many would actually be able to be excluded? Like, is it all just FedEx?
What you think of the order is, if I have a moving van, say, a moving, a new house, you got a fifty-foot moving van coming and moving in there, that's allowed. It has, it has to use that street in order to make a, make a door.
So do you know what the impact's going to be? We can actually help anything by doing that?
Well, what we, what I think what we're hoping to do is to keep truck traffic that's going down to Home Foods from cutting through Woodwood Street and they, they'll have to go around the truck route, which is down Eddie Street, go down Eddie Street, then down South Worcester and not cut through Woodwood.
And it's to allow the, the police to actually ticket and do something about it, because right now their hands are tied, there's really nothing they can do.
Right, because they come down Woodwood Street and then they have to make that sharp turn. It's dangerous to get onto Worcester to go into the, to the building.
And they're cutting them with a railroad track and it's, it's a narrow street there. I mean, it's a, it's a much more residential area than going down Eddie Street.
It has occurred. In the new age of Waze, where you put your phone in your phone, these guys are not familiar with the area and it's taking the street because that's what Waze is telling them to do. And by seeing the signs, I realize they can't use that street, they go another mile.
And I think somehow that it gets into Waze and those kind of platforms as well, that when it, as soon as, when the state says that, or when DOT says, okay, that is a, not a truck route, that it's no longer available.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Camarina, I hate for you to displace your public, and maybe actually the question's to you. Are you, I grew up in Foxborough and when the new stadium was built, Rob Kraft had to do different things and I lived on Beach Street, which was a major cut through to get down, you know, to the stadium from one end of town. They put in sort of islands at the mouth of each end of the road, which I know would deter the ability for larger vehicles like that. Is that a possibility on some of these roads where we could get away from what the law, make it just not feasible? You know, we don't have to change laws, we don't have to change rules, we could just put some sort of deterrent in, you know, that makes it not a convenient cut for, for the larger vehicles.
From my, from my understanding, this is the, we're going the inexpensive route first, which is that this hasn't cost us anything yet.
Okay.
So we did the traffic study first, which you have to do no matter what, and then the letter to the DOT, which isn't going to, it's not going to cost anything. That's, that's the first, in my, this is just my personal view, it's the first step to be able to enforce no trucks down there.
Yeah.
Rather than, and what is, is, I don't know if an island would work, but I know what you're saying with Foxborough.
I know.
Yeah, well, just, you know, I mean, road design and I mean, don't, I'm not into rotaries because that's way too, oh, excuse me, roundabouts. But, you know, just some sort of a deterrent that makes it a less attractive route for them. And if, and the other side of it is, okay, it's enforceable, but that means we have to have police down there, you know, and so that takes away from other places that they need to be and if we're going to be shorthanded in this department.
I spoke with Chief Clark about this specifically and he said that if we do this, that's great, it would become enforceable, but the, on the off chance that there's going to be a cruiser in the area when a truck goes down that road is going to be very slim.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're not going to sit there on Woodwood Street looking for trucks going down that street.
So Plan B, maybe we can look at speed bumps, not the president saying it like that.
So to move this forward, so what do you need from us? Do you need us to authorize somebody to, to work with you to send that letter or just authorize you to send it?
You guys.
Me to send it?
You guys have to send it.
All right.
It has to come from the board. We're on a forty committee, we can't.
I'm not writing seventy-five pages. I'll tell you that.
All you have to do is please first see these, yeah, that's more, report, traffic report and outline what you want, why not, you want to put up no truck signs.
Okay. So then I would think that we would want the board to authorize, I guess, me or somebody to, to work on the letter with, with Mr. Kimball and then send it on behalf of the board.
We'll do it. I'll, I'll take care of that. So, Mr., do you need a motion to do that?
We do, actually, I think.
Okay. You want me to make the motion?
Yeah, make the motion to us, I'm not going to be there.
Doing it for yourself? Yeah, all right. So I will, I'll make a motion to, to authorize the Select Board to have Roger Marsan work with the Chair of the Traffic Safety Committee on a letter to the DOT regarding truck traffic restrictions on Woodwood Street.
You hit every point, very good.
We've been doing this.
I know, I know.
All right. So motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Can I bring one up? One other thing we're brought up here. I was talking with Chief Clark the other day and, you know, will you be able to change speed limits? I want to work with the chief and we'll come back, develop a policy so that if someone wants his speed limit changed, they have to go through the Traffic Safety Committee, who will refer it to the safety officer at the Police Department. And he'll make a recommendation that will come here.
That sounds good to me.
But we'll work on something and get it to you a future meeting.
Okay.
So I'll get in touch with you and we'll put, put a letter together with that packet and we'll, do you, do you guys want to see it before we send it to DOT or can we just send it?
I'm fine with sending it.
Um, yeah.
I'd like to see it, but I don't think we have to approve it.
Yeah.
I'll just, I'll.
We don't need to put another stuff in there. Yeah. Okay. And Mr. Chair, one more thing, just thanks to Bob and the Traffic Safety Committee, because I know they're getting a lot of requests. I mean, you talked about Newland Street and this and Wheaton and all that kind of stuff, so.
Where are we going? Can you, we thought, because you, we can't do it.
And the, much appreciated. The Traffic Safety Committee does a lot of work. I've, I've been to several of their meetings and just the amount of people that are around that table and the information that comes in is amazing, the stuff that people assume is happening that is not happening, but not legal.
And I, and I know it's coming up on the agenda at some point, but Roger wants to take that from me. He wants to be the appointee to that committee. I said, that's the only one during the day. I can get that one. All right.
What did you say, you and the Toronto boat, they're talking about the same.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kimball.
Thanks, Bob.
So, Chief, do you? Sorry for this, folks. I have to, I'm not anticipating. So, no, I don't even know, so what's up with the project? Because all of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, if they're back in practice, possibly, that's not, something we do.
We'll report it on, we'll get that.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that. Do we have any topics not reasonably anticipated? No? Okay. So we were supposed to review and discuss the building department permit fees. What's going on with that? What do you have, Nick?
Uh, Nick, well, he'll be at the August meeting, so we can do that.
All right. I'm, I'm fine tabling that, but I don't want to table that any further than August. I think we've kind of, we're going on almost a year now for that one. Okay. So, now, Town Manager's Report.
So just want to let you know that treatments are going to be starting on some of the lakes and ponds and we have posted notices on the town website and there will be notices posted out at the lakes. So July twenty-third, when a kind of pond is going to be treated, July twenty-fifth will be the initial water chestnut treatment at Charley Pond. On July twenty-ninth through July thirty-first, water chestnut hand cooling will be at Norton Reservoir and August eighth will be a follow-up water chestnut treatment at Charley Pond. So notices will be posted around those ponds and all the information's on the town website also.
Does that mean no swimming in the ponds during that time period?
Yes.
Not safe for dogs. Drink water.
Right. Don't eat the fish.
So basically, the month of July, the month of July and August stay away.
So, yeah, I think it, I don't know how many hours it is after they treat, it's not that long.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's like a week.
Yes. And just an update on the recertification process that's still ongoing with the assessors' office. And I know there were some people saying that the assessors are coming out there just because they want to raise everyone's values and raise more money. And so I just want to remind everyone that we can only raise our levy two and a half percent. So if values of properties all go up, the tax rate comes down. If values went down, tax rate would go up. Everything has to stay in that level area, so they're not just doing it to raise more money.
Mike, can I ask a question for the, for the sort of road assessors that go around? Do we use our own employees for that or do we third-party that out?
Well.
Okay.
The commercial is usually done by a third party. Our assessors go out and they'll have a third party at its times too.
Okay. Excuse me, one more question, Mike. Is that townwide you're doing it or they're just doing?
Townwide.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the five-year recertification program.
So everybody's going to have some sort of, somebody coming by their property to do an assessment on?
Yeah.
Okay.
So do you want to outline what that entails when they come into the property? Because I think people were panicking thinking they're, they're going to come into my house and they're going to do this and that. Just, just for clarification, third party.
And they're going to get a clarview, the next victim's next week, information television shows on cable. This week, Jared Ferraro is on talking about the recycling center, I want to thank him for that. And we had Melissa on talking about the Everett Leonard Pool. So next week, the assessor is going to be on and the veteran's agent, she'll be talking about this. So they, they go into everybody's property and, you know, if there's anything that new has been done, it may increase the value of the property, but it's all standard, you know, just, properties could go down in value if a house has become rundown, so they want to make sure if anything's been added on the property, you know, needs to be assessed and get out and on, but.
Now you have a comment.
You know, the law is.
I want to make sure we're all clear. Normally during the Town Manager's Report, I wouldn't have comments, but I'm allowed because Roger.
I'd like to.
Next time I just.
You will.
So to answer your question, Roger, all inspection, inspections will be completed of all properties in town unless the property has been visited within the last four years. So, because it's the five-year program.
All right. So if somebody's coming on your property, they're just coming on to reassess the value of your property.
Right.
It's not to raise your tax, it's not to raise anybody's taxes. And if your, if your property becomes worth more, your tax rate may all go down.
Right. So some of the data collectors are members of PK Valuation Group, they'll carry a picture ID and a letter of introduction from the assessors' office and the collectors will measure from the outside all the buildings on the property and then do an interior walk through. The final goal is a uniform, fair market value of all properties in Norton. In other words, a fair assessment of your property.
All right. Did you have a question?
I did. Kind of question statement. I think, I know on social media over the past month, there's been all sorts of talks about strange people in people's yards and all of that and, you know, I think clear identification, I think maybe communication is such a key, is such key. We have so many resources to do it now. I think that letting people know, just like you read, Mike, just now, you know, saying exactly what this is and letting them know, this is what they're, who they are, what they're going to be doing. And according to social media, I haven't seen that yet, so hearsay, people didn't see any identification. So I think for their own safety too, the assessors maybe should have some sort of badge or something that's visible and required to be visible that they can show because I wouldn't want that job on it, so it's strange if you have to say that.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Mike.
All right. So just another thing, last night, we, I met with the Finance Committee and we did year-end transfers, so we covered everything for the year. We did transfers last night of sixty-five thousand, forty-three dollars. This was all from the reserve fund to cover fifty-two dollars in legal. Town clerk, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. Snow and ice, eight thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. Veterans office, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. Park and Rec, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. Interest on long-term debt, nine thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Medicare tax, twenty-one thousand, municipal building, ten thousand. And also data processing, eleven thousand six eighty-one. So the last two, we had quite a discussion on. And so the data processing, eleven thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars was for a switch for the communication system at the Police Department. And we have tried to argue that we wouldn't have to do that if all the equipment wasn't being moved out of there as part of the new town hall project. Because now all the server, everything's going to be in the new server on the town hall, but that's a dispute. And so we couldn't hold it up because it has to be paid. As I discussed with the Finance Committee last night, if, who's the representative of the building committee? If the board would encourage the rep from the building committee to bring it up at the next meeting, we can then, this money would then become, if it's covered under the building project, it would then be free cash. We'd go back, this would be returned as free cash and this would be covered under the building project. Both ways, as I said, it's coming out of that very pocket.
So my thoughts on this one, and I know there's another one that's part of this too, so I joined you both now.
Yeah, I'll do the other one. So the other one, the municipal building, would have been fine, the issue. The issue there was, as part of the project, where the building's being built down in that area, the parking area in the building, that's where our septic field used to be. So, they had, they put in a tank, a large tank, it's part of the new septic system, which is connected to a pump system that will pump it up to the field. So, in the meantime, while we were waiting for electricity to come and the full pump system to get operational, which just happened this week, we've been paying to pump that tank, because there's no field for anything to go to, so we spent like $13,000 paying Sures to pump that tank while during this time, and so that was another discussion, that that could be considered part of the project, because you had to take over our field and put a tank in, and now we had to pay to pump the tank several times, but we wouldn't have to do it if the project wasn't ongoing.
Okay, so my thoughts on this are that both of those need to be paid through the building fund, through the permanent building committee. I don't know if we can, as a board, I would recommend that we deny payment through free cash, I don't think that we should be paying it through free cash, it should come out of the buildings.
So, remind us, former chair of the building committee?
I'm going to allow one more comment, but no, honestly, this is, during the town manager's report, this should not be happening, so just...
I have some contextual history.
Okay, if you can make it brief.
Yes, I can. I believe you were at the meeting, Mr. Hornsby, I know Mr. Wiltool was there, Meg Arts, I believe you were there, Mr. Schneider, when we came to the selectmen to discuss pumping stations and lift stations. It was agreed at that time that that would not be part of the building committee project, but that the town manager would use ARPA funds to take care of everything that was, had to do with the displacement of the current septic field. And that was agreed at a selectmen's meeting, I can't tell you how many years ago, but I remember...
Two years ago, I don't remember the date, but I remember...
But it was agreed at that point in time that they should be paid through ARPA funds and not through the construction project. The construction project was only responsible for getting the materials to the lift station and the pumping station. The town was going to take the rest of it.
Okay, thank you. So, in my, in my opinion, even though that was said during that meeting, this, it didn't have to, the septic system didn't have to be connected in order to cause that pumping. I'm sure some of you have talked about this, I had an issue with a property that had pumping, it cost $100,000, so it's quite a bit. This is 13K, I think, I think it needs to go to the permanent building committee as part of the project. The data processing, moving those wires, that, to me, is a no-brainer, that's part of the project, so I don't know why we would, you know, with all this talk around town about spending free cash on things that we shouldn't, this is a prime example of it, in my opinion. So, anybody else, please?
Yeah, just one quick question, I think $22,000, the rent there was benefits, Medicare or Medicaid?
$21,000 was Medicare tax.
So, why was that not included in the budget?
Because the budget was a lot higher, the salaries were a lot higher than anticipated.
For fiscal year 2023.
I guess, I'm not sure, I think we had anticipated the budget was made up with salaries, so we knew what they were.
We know on the town side, but on the school side, I don't think they were, we weren't aware, the salaries were increased 5.6%, and we just weren't aware of that. You know, the school budget, we get a one...
Just one number?
Right.
Mr. Chair? Mike, so the, do we have any ARPA funds left?
So...
You knew that question was coming, right?
So, the discussion on ARPA was, ARPA was going to pay for the installation of the entire septic system, and then, as the project went on, the decision was made that they didn't need ARPA funds to pay for the system. So, we were going to use Bristol County ARPA, and we pulled it back because we've notified that they didn't need ARPA funds, because I would imagine, because the project came in lower than anticipated.
Yeah, I know, I believe that was prior to my time as being on there, so I don't remember that meeting, of course.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure we plan better, too, for the benefit piece, because I'm sure, like, if you had asked for a list of everyone's salaries for the year, you could get that pretty easily, so we should really get that information drilled down before the budget cycle comes up, so we're not doing some...
I believe that was requested from the schools, right? Did he request that? I think it was, I thought I saw it somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, my point is, we shouldn't be going to free cash for benefits that should be built into the budget.
No, yeah, it's not, this isn't...
Right.
This isn't free cash, this is coming out of the reserve fund, which is part of our budget.
So, I mean, at the very least, for me, you know, the 13K for the, for the septic pumping and the $11,681 for the data processing should be paid through the permanent building committee's project. I don't know if we need to vote on that, or, I'll make a motion if we need to.
So, what's, yeah, before you, it's okay, yeah, so kind of where, what would be next in the process? I guess I'm a little fuzzy on the process.
So, right now, the finance committee's approved these transfers.
Based on our approval?
Because, well, no, they've approved these transfers because they had to, because it was the end of the year.
Right, right.
And they got it with these bills that had to be paid. But, as we discussed with the finance committee last night, the select board asked the building committee, and the building committee agrees that these two should be paid out of the project, then the town accountant can make an entry along these two, take them out of the project, and then stake in the reserve fund, which will become served as free cash.
So, if we make a motion to have the representative ask the building committee to...
Right, so we're sending Steve then?
Is basically what we're doing.
That's all.
We don't have, we can't make a recommendation to pay that, we can make a recommendation that our representative go into the...
I'm still fuzzy on this, I don't think we need to recommend anything, I think we can, we can, we can vote and say that the building committee has to take this out of the project, I don't think we need to recommend it. I mean, am I right?
You can do that.
Yeah, so, so I would, I would vote, I mean, I would vote right now to have it come out of the permanent building committee's project budget, I mean...
So, do they have the money to do it?
Yeah.
Right, and, thanks, Roger.
Man, you keep doing that.
But, yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking, it's like, why?
There's, there's a...
Why are they fighting it?
The last, the last meeting, there was about a $500,000, $500,000 contingency for the town hall and $700,000, $800,000 for the senior center, so, you know, bickering over $23,000 is coming from a budget where we're so short every year here, it's ridiculous to me.
Taking it out of my reserve budget.
And going to ask with our hat in hand is not the way to do this, we need to say, "No, this, this is coming, this is from your project, this is coming from your project budget," I mean.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Mike, what was the vote for that call?
The vote was to...
Was it, was it unanimous?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm breaking my own rule, Sandy, will you come up here one second? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, it was unanimous, but it was unanimous to, because we kind of felt like we, it wasn't our place to say where it should come from, that's not our, it's not our position, so we said, you know, pay the bill, we'd reserve funds, but then to, to have a conversation. I mean, you know, I do think it gets a little tricky when, I appreciate that, that's your, you can overstep, you can overrule as a volunteer at awards, it would be nice if, you know, the conversation was held, instead of just a...
It's wasted conversation.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, you appoint these people, and I think to undermine them is, to rule against it is kind of undermining them. I don't know when this was discussed at meetings, I...
I've not heard of it, I'm on the building committee, I've not heard of it.
I don't know if they voted on it, what the discussion was, I didn't know any of that last night, that was kind of what I asked, if I feel like I missed that whole conversation. I know I missed a couple of meetings, and I don't have good memories, so it could have been discussed, and I just didn't, didn't really catch it.
There was, there was no discussion, maybe it's just the OPM.
Right, it could have been just more people saying, you know, but, so that's, it would be nice to have at least the PBC weigh in, give their, give their feedback, give their rationale, you know, to what Diana was saying earlier, maybe they could elaborate on more recent conversations that have happened before, just, you know, it seems a little heavy-handed just to say, we're going to rule them, that's just my opinion.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but they didn't come to us with that request, they didn't, I mean, as far as I know, nobody came to us with that request. The first I heard of it was a phone call I got on my way here about it, so this is the first I've heard of it, so, that, to me, is, you know...
It just seems odd to me that it's, it's kind of, I'm sorry. No, that's okay, it's, it's kind of, I feel like it's out of order, it's coming to us kind of out of order, and that's why I'm struggling with it a little bit, like, I agree with what you're saying, like, you know, just make a decision, but on the other hand, I'm feeling like stuff is supposed to flow from the PBC to us, and they're supposed to make recommendations, and then we are supposed to take it under advisement and then make a decision. I feel like it's kind of like, we're skipping a, I don't want to say we're skipping a step, but like, something's not lining up here.
So, if I can, I mean, I feel like this, this kind of thing happens way too often in this town, where it's, you guys got that last minute last night, we haven't even heard of it, and all of a sudden, it's $25,000, it's just gone, out of our budget, and I, and that, that happens way too often in this town. It's happened for years, and I don't like it, I don't think anybody here likes it. I think, and I don't think it's anybody's fault, I'm not blaming anybody in particular, I just think that this is the way business has been done in this town, and it's not the way it should be done, and I'm not blaming you, by any means, so I'm sorry, I'm looking at you.
But where did it come from? Did it probably go to you guys?
I think it came, I'm sorry, I think it came from, we had to pay the bill. So, that was the catalyst for everything, so we had to pay the bill, and now it's like, okay, we paid the bill, but where's the money going to come from?
So, and then, like, the bill for the switch, we send the bills to the OPM, and then the OPM tells us, nope, this isn't considered out of our project.
Right, so, so maybe you, so that was where you're thinking, maybe the OPM came back and said, not...
Like, Sandy, maybe the building committee doesn't even know that the OPM is...
Yeah, I didn't see, I went back in a minute, so I didn't see any bill signed or anything.
No, there was nothing, nothing.
So, it was maybe they're not even aware, having to have a discussion, and again, you know, it would be worth a conversation. It's not, I mean, the bills are paid, right, it's not, there's no rush, I don't think, at this point, right, Mike, to make the decision tonight, so I think, just out of, you know, consideration for your volunteers, who you appoint, to give them an opportunity to have a conversation with them.
So, the OPM is third-party contracted to run the project, right? So, why?
Own this project.
And they said, no, so the phone, that's why we have to go back and say, yeah, no.
We're all thinking the same thing to you.
Well, yeah, this is your bill paying.
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, I, I would take it back to the permanent building committee and have them come to us and give us a reason as to why we should pay it, rather than the other end.
I feel like, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My bigger question, I guess, is what kind of roadblocks or safeguards do we put in so we're not doing this?
Which is what creating that committee for? Yeah, so, yeah.
So, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not going in six directions, you know, but there's a straight line way to do this, there's a, there's a way to have this happen.
Yeah, I get that emergencies happen, something seems like, seemed like we should have anticipated.
Yeah, this wasn't a emergency, we knew...
Or it could have been something as simple as, they're like, they're saying, "Well, I'm going to put this in on July 27th, so I know they're going to have to pay it."
All right, Danny, if you have a brief comment, I'm going to wrap this up.
When you're looking at your charter and your bylaws, all money for the maintenance, construction, and updating of municipal buildings, including the schools, falls under the purview of the municipal building committee. That's according to your bylaws and your charter. I would recommend, as a former chair of the building committee, that it would be politically astute of you to have a conversation with them. I know they are trying, when I talked with someone yesterday on the committee, they're trying desperately to return as much money back to the taxpayers as they can and not have to borrow the amount, and they may think, they might be viewed as, oh, the town can't figure out how to pay a bill, so there's a big pot of money over here, so we'll just take it out of that. I think it would be best politically served to have a conversation with your building committee and come to an agreement, because they do control the money.
Okay, I can, I can speak for myself, I'm sure you all know this, I don't do anything politically motivated, so, my decisions are based on what I think is best for the town, not what I think is best for me politically.
The town accountant, I did have that conversation last night with the finance committee, so if we have the money available and pay this, taxpayers are paying it. If we, it's put on the building committee, the taxpayers are paying it with interest because it's borrowed.
You could say that about anything, they could say, "We want new flat-screen TV, we're going to get them out of dangerous, or we're going to get them out of free cash." I mean, you could say that with any expense that they have. So, to me, to me, and again, I'm not blaming anybody, to me, that was like slipped in in the dark of night, and I don't like this shady business, and I don't like it, it does not sit right with me at all, but, you know, I'm willing to talk to the building committee, if that's feasible.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was just going to suggest, like, maybe that, you know, I, I think that would be, I, like I said, I feel like there's something out of sequence here, and maybe it was because they, they were under pressure, time pressure, or whatever, and they just did it.
I don't think it was intentional, personally, I don't think it was intentional.
Be good to maybe let them explain it to you as the select board, and then we can go from there, I think, just get a little bit more information. There's just something, there's something we're missing here, I feel like.
I do, definitely is a piece.
Okay, so...
Just a couple other things. So, Jared's going to start working on the tennis courts at the middle school to create the racquetball courts.
Pickleball.
Pickleball, pickleball. Now, the school's out. Also, I sent you an email that the LPGA is coming on August 26th through September 1st, and they do have opportunities for charitable groups to work the concessions to raise money, so if anyone knows of any charitable groups that are interested in that. And just one other thing, we've had some concern raised about people using the bike trail and cutting across 123 in front of traffic. Technically, the bike trail is not open yet, the bike trail is not finished, the safety measures aren't up, so, just, they're going to try and put up barrels blocking some of those areas right now, but just caution people that the bike trail is not done.
All right.
This is here under...
Yep. Okay, so we get, anything else I can say?
No.
So, the select board's report in mail, I know Roger has some things.
So, I just have a couple of things, I just want to make note of the passing of James Dinsel. He was a longtime resident in town. He was a U.S. Army veteran, he was a life member at the VFW, spent 21 years on a Norton Director of Human Services and Council on Aging. He's a, was a, as we heard tonight, he was a member of the Norton Housing Authority, and he is going to be greatly missed in our town. I'd also like to make note of several Boy Scouts in town who are attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Matt, Mr. Drain, would you like to come up and talk about these gentlemen, or?
No, no.
Okay, so anyway, Matthew Christian Cropley, Casey Tyler Dion, Andrew Geeta, and John Joseph Aruda. So, at 1:00 PM on August 11th, 2024, at St. Mary's Church, there will be an Eagle Court of Honor to elevate these gentlemen to the rank of Eagle Scout. We have some letters that we'll be bringing there, and I will certainly, myself, be there for that. We have some letters that will be bringing there, and I will certainly, myself, be there for that. Got a letter from Comcast here as well. Okay, we don't, we have one less channel, I guess.
And the price is going up?
And the price is going up, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, I approve the warrant as written, and our next meeting is August 15th, we're in a public hearing. Anything else? We have no executive session tonight, so...
I...
Mr. Chair?
Make a motion, would you?
Yeah.
A second, a second. Motion, yeah, all of you, yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.